Natai uno, na lehasla chunguahan. Is called to order. And I'd like to recognize the Assistant Majority Leader for a motion to adopt today's session agenda, Senator Guthertz.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, I move to adopt today's session agenda dated November 1, 2011.
And that motion without any objections, so ordered. Can I ask if Senator Yamashita, you can lead us in prayer?
Dear Lord, as we begin this session and as we proceed through this session, let us reflect on what we're thinking, what we're saying, how we say it. Let us realize all that we've learned last week through all of the conferences on bullying, through the forums on human rights and decolonization, on all the gatherings that pulled all our social service workers together. And let's really reflect on how we can bring the time and the attention, the respect for all, by all, to ensure that our policies are well discussed, well intended, and that we reach the best policy possible so that all of our families can have a high quality of life on our island, particularly as we proceed and welcome our holiday season. With this, we pray.
Senator Palacios, if you can lead us in the recitation of the Inifresi.
[Inifresi]. 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 [Inifresi].
Oh, Senator Duennas, lead us in singing the Guam hymn and Senator Blas on the singing of the National Anthem.
[Inifresi]. 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 [Inifresi].
Anna Massey. I'm going to ask the clerks if you can please take roll.
President.
Senator Tonyeda.
Good morning, President.
Senator Blas.
Good afternoon.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Good morning.
Senator Duennas.
Madam Sodus, good afternoon.
Senator Guthertz.
President.
Senator Mabini.
President.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Madam Sodus, good afternoon.
Senator Palacios.
Good afternoon.
Senators Penlinen.
Yes.
Senators Respecho. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senators Silva Tyeran.
President.
Speaker Wampat.
President.
And Senator Yamashita.
Here.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum. Thank you. I recognize again the Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Guthertz, for a call for the approval of the Legislative Journal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to approve the Daily Journal of August 16th to September 19th, 2011, subject to corrections.
And that motion without any objections, so ordered. On petitions and communications.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions. I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
And that motion without any objections, so ordered. Are there any messages?
Madam Speaker, there are messages from the Governor of Guam, and I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
Any objections? They're being none, so ordered. Senator Guthertz, on standing reports.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
And that motion without any objections, so ordered. And the, um, any other select committee reports?
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees at this time.
And introduction and first readings of the OCEAN resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number 3101-31 through Bill Number 361-31 and Resolutions Number 196-31 to Resolution Number 258-31 be given its first reading.
Without any objections, so ordered. And Senator, we do have some members absent. Can you get a motion, please, to excuse them?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse Senator Respecho from today's session. He's off island on personal business.
And that motion without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that all legislative resolutions and certificates of congratulatory, commendatory, or condolence nature introduced before the end of the legislative day be considered to have had its first reading, that may be adopted by the body, and that all members be listed as cosponsors, and to allow the legal counsel to make technical corrections as are necessary or as recommended by the author.
Any objections? They're being none, so ordered. Senator, on legislative concurrence?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nominations of the following on the legislative concurrence section of our agenda. These include the following. Ms. Conchita Bahan to the Guam Land Use Commission. Mr. John Ilau to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Mr. John Ray Titanow to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Mr. John Rios as Director of the Bureau of Budget Management Research. Mrs. Lisa Bazacruz to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Education Certification. Ms. Margie N. Arturo to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. Ms. Roberta Abadai to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. Dr. Lawrence Kastnerbauer to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. Dr. Gregory Miller to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. Ms. Linda Perez to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. Mr. Jason Prove to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Mr. Andrew S. Tidinko to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Mr. William G. Miller to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council. Mr. Brent Wise to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, so...
There's one more, Madam Speaker.
There's one more?
Just for the motion that's been proposed on the table.
Okay, we, yes, so noted.
Thank you.
Hearing no objections, then, so ordered.
Yeah.
On, um, legislative, let me see, concurrence?
Over written bills.
Yes, do, is there any?
Yes. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, to place the followed vetoed bills on the voting file for override consideration. Bill Numbers 80-31, Bill Number...
Oh, wait, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Bill Number 80-31, which is an act relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board.
And the motion, I recognize, Speaker Penlinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of placing vetoed Bill 80-31, notwithstanding the objections on the Governor, on the voting file for an override. Vetoed Bill 80-31 is pretty simple, Madam Speaker. What the bill would set up is an additional review process for qualifying certificates. As we know, the Qualifying Certificate Program is a program that allows tax abatements and rebatements to companies who want to do business on Guam or even expand their operations on Guam. And in exchange for the employment they provide, the additional economic activity, then these individuals will get a rebate on the taxes. And the theory is that we assist these companies for the first growth stage of their business by allowing them to keep what taxes they would pay and reinvest it back into their businesses for the purpose of ensuring greater chances of success because of that additional working capital gets plowed right back into the business. And so, we set up this program, and then what we have is then the program is set up for a longer period of time for the duration. So, it provides an opportunity for the investment to grow and the rebates to stabilize the growth during its formative years. And at the end of the term, the idea is that we've now got a solid business enterprise who's able to move on and operate normally without the subsidy of these rebates and abatements. Because that's really what it is. It's a subsidy that the government pays to these new businesses to try and mitigate some of the risks that they are doing, that they are taking on in making the investments for economic enterprises on Guam. What we've seen in the past, Madam Speaker, is that these certificates change hands when businesses get sold or before, at the expiration, they get extended. Without any real review and analysis as to whether or not it needs to be extended, whether or not it's in the best interest of the government now, which has subsidized these companies for 10, 15, 20 years in their operations, to extend that subsidy beyond what the initial term of the qualifying certificate would be. So, the bill sets up a sub-board within, almost like a sub-board within the GIDEA Qualifying Certificate Review Process. So that when a company asks for an extension or a company asks for a modification of the qualifying certificate, of the subsidy that is given to support their operations, that we need to take a look at this from a more government operations, government finance point of view versus an investment point of view. Because the investment is already made, the subsidy's already been given, and it's now be, to be extended beyond the life of what was originally intended. So now, we're not looking at capital risk and so forth, we're just looking at maybe convenience. And so, we want the review process to be, to extend beyond GIDEA, whose main mission is to stimulate economic investment in the initial formative years of these companies coming to Guam, and to help them through the qualifying certificate program. Once they are up and running, then we need to take a look at these operations now from a government finance point. And does it make sense to continue to support new, these extensions or changeovers in companies and automatic transfer of these qualifying certificates, given what the financial condition of the government is? And so, we've set up a qualifying review board in which we now have the financial managers, not the investment managers as GIDEA is, but the financial managers of the government to take a look at what the effect of this modification in the QC program, I mean, in the certificate program, or extension of the tax abatement rebate, or the extension of the subsidy. And so, that's what this would do, Madam Speaker, is it would then have the, this board chaired by Rev. Tax, BBMR, and the other financial managers of the government of Guam, take a look at these changes to an existing QC, not the granting of a new one, an existing QC of any changes and modifications, hold some hearings on it, make it an open and transparent process, and then make the recommendation to the GIDEA Board, which still has the ultimate decision to decide, I mean, authority to decide, but make that recommendation, and then, of course, it goes to the Governor, and the Governor is the final authority on the granting of these certificates. I look at this, Madam Speaker, as what we have with the Pardon Review Board. We know that the power to pardon rests solely and exclusively in the Governor of Guam. But we've seen in past where, you know, the pardon process really becomes so convoluted, so hidden, so political in terms of who gets a pardon, because it's totally up to that political person, the Governor of Guam. And that's the way it was set up. But we wanted to ensure that everybody gets a fair chance, at least. We know that, at least, that we can have the community's perspective injected into the process of a pardon. And so, we created this Pardon Review Board, and it's, it works in tandem with the Parole Review Board. But when somebody requests for a pardon, it gets reviewed by this review board, and it's sent up to the Governor, and he makes the final decision. Nobody disputes that he has that sole authority to do so. But that doesn't mean that the interests of the community through people who are serving in the restorative justice system, the parole process, the pardon process, that, that doesn't mean that those interests shouldn't be factored into making recommendations to the Governor. So, it's very much akin, and as I say, with this Qualifying Certificate Review Board, in which now the financial managers of the government, who have seen what it takes to run this government, take a look at whether or not the subsidies that we have granted these qualifying certificate entities have actually been successful, have actually resulted in greater employment, greater government revenues, because the taxes that they would have paid, although not collected by the government, gets reinvested into the enterprise, and it grows. And therefore, you actually reap a bigger reward by allowing and, and some subsidies to, inure to these, to these enterprises during the early and formative years. And so, Madam Speaker, that really is the gist of vetoed Bill 80-31, is to add that additional review process, not for the granting of qualifying certificates, because we, I certainly, as the author of this, recognize, acknowledge, and do not debate who is vested with the power to grant qualifying certificates. But it is also very important that in the implementation of this program, that once we get past the investment incentives and setting up these corporations with the subsidies that are given through the abatements and the rebates, that then we need to take a look at whether or not it is fulfilling its promise, whether the entities are in fact making the investments that they promised in exchange for the subsidy and the support that they get from the taxpayers of Guam, whether or not they're fulfilling those terms and conditions, most especially when they're asking for extensions, renewals, or transfers of these qualifying certificates. And so, Madam Speaker, I believe it is a good process that will add another dimension to the examination of the qualifying certificate program, to take a look at it now from the financial impact of the government of Guam versus what GIDEA is tasked with, is looking at the investment and economic impact of these initial investments in the granting of these initial qualifying certificates. So, I ask my colleagues for their deliberation on this, their kind thoughts and considerations, and most importantly, their vote on the override of this bill. Thank you, and Sodus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion. So, notwithstanding then the objections of Magalain Guahan on vetoed Bill Number 80-31, to place on the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we also have vetoed Bill Number 155-31 to deappropriate the sums appropriated and transferred by the Governor during fiscal year 2004 through 2009 for expenditures related to the municipal solid waste landfill facility and the closure of the Ordat dump, and to reappropriate said sum amount for the payment of emergency income tax refunds for tax year 2009 and prior, and appropriate $500,000 to Department of Public Works for the Umati and Mariso Cemeteries, and to amend Sections 58B102 and 58B106 of Chapter 56B Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the pledge of Section 30 revenues for the expansion of Okadu High School.
On the motion, I recognize...
Oh, so you're saying, so it's not necessary. Madam Speaker, I've been informed by the originator of the bill that this is not needed. So, we'll withdraw this for consideration.
And that motion then to withdraw, no objection.
All right. And also the same with Bill Number 154-31. There's no need for this, no motion, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Guthertz, then. Senator Guthertz, then, on the matter of the consent calendar.
Yes, Madam Speaker. I move to place the names of those individuals identified earlier to various boards and directorships on the voting file.
Okay, without any objections, so ordered. We're in second reading?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
We're in second reading then, so, let me see. Wait, 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 let me, let me look. We're in second reading file, and the first bill on the agenda is Bill Number 141, and I recognize the primary author, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 141-31 to the second reading file.
The third reading?
A third reading file, and be allowed to discuss this measure.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 141 is an act to promote early childhood learning and development opportunities through the promotion of modern childcare facilities by providing a business privileged tax exemption for childcare centers and group childcare homes by adding a new Part 37 to Subsection K of Subsection 26203, Chapter 26, Title 11. Madam Speaker, I would like to first thank the Chairman of Committee on Appropriations for reporting this bill out, for having the hearing, and of course, for my cosponsor, Senator Yamashita, for helping in putting this together and seeing this move forward. Bill 141 was introduced as a companion legislation to Bill 70-31, which is now public law 31-73, establishing the administrative rules and regulations of the Department of Public Health and Social Services relative to childcare centers and group childcare homes. The standards and objectives of childcare facilities have progressed nationwide to that of being early educational facilities. It has clearly been determined that such an environment is beneficial in the early development of child, of children exposed to genuine learning experiences within a more formal setting appropriately adapted to their preschool age. But the modernization of childcare facilities and their compliance with applicable rules and regulations does come at a price, Madam Speaker. It is the intent of this bill to facilitate the implementation of rules and regulations enacted pursuant to public law 31-73 by offering a conditional business privileged tax exemption in an effort to provide financial relief as centers come into appropriate compliance. Statistical information provided by the Department of Public Health and Social Services relative to the 47 licensed childcare centers and group childcare homes shows there are approximately 2,350 children enrolled. The range of cost for enrollment on full-time basis ranges from an average of low of $410 to an average high of about $500. Taking an average of $455, the monthly gross revenue is approximately 1 million and annually about 12 million. At 4%, this approximate figure equates to annual gross receipts tax revenue to the government of about $500,000. Approximately $10,920 from this, from each childcare business when divided equally, which is not the case, but is of value when considering the amount of funds potentially available to centers if said funds were instead be utilized for the required improvements to achieve the compliance with public law 31-73. The tax relief is intended to offset the costs of meeting the standards set forth in the rules and regulation enacted pursuant to public law 31-73, and thereby alleviate the need for daycare centers and group homes to increase fees which could negatively impact their clients. To ensure this objective is accomplished, this bill provides for an optional alternative to daycare centers to claim the tax relief provided, but with the restriction that their fees shall not be increased by more than 5% within a given year. Madam Speaker, what this bill also does is that the savings that these childcare centers would realize from this small tax break would allow them to hire more childcare provide, childcare, childcare givers in their centers. A lot, you know, we've heard during the public hearings on this bill and also on public law 31-73 on how really the childcare centers are struggling. A lot of times, it's just, you know, the owners who would, would have to decrease their enrollments because it would only be them or their, and their spouse who's handling the children, because they just can't afford to bring in more individuals to work for them. And so, as we move forward in coming into compliance with this new public law 71, 31-73, this also opens up a lot of opportunities for our childcare providers to, to make the much-needed improvements and to also help in, in creating more jobs for our community. So, I ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker...
Senator Rodriguez on the motion. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I thank Senator Rodriguez for upholding the importance of early childhood education through introducing bills and through advocating for our families. Madam Speaker, you are very well aware, and you too are an advocate, of the idea that everything starts at the beginning. Last week, we were all together as we attended the bowling conference, as we sat here and listened to human rights conversations. Pejuta had a gathering of all the social workers, and clearly, on our island, we have great concerns of social emotional issues. And clearly, all of those issues, prevention-wise, are addressed if we do it right at the beginning. That is, if we take care of raising our children in appropriate manners, where respect is provided, where quality learning opportunities are given. And one of the avenues that we do that throughout our island now is the care centers. It used to be that our kids, we stayed home, and our aunties, our ninjas, our grandparents stayed home and watched us, but today, that scenario has changed. Many grandparents are working, and so who takes care of the children? And so while we had great concern about the standards of licensing through childcare, we have addressed that. This legislature had the courage to say that this is what we need to have our care centers knowing and being able to do for all of our children, and that has passed. And certainly, there is still resistance, and certainly, there is still great concern because the standards have required greater investment. And certainly because they're small businesses, they're struggling. I just got a notice of a care center that has been with us for a very long time, and she is shutting her doors. She can't invest anymore. And so, this proposal, this bill, will offer a little relief. It's not a lot, but it's a great statement in saying that the business of childcare is important to our island community. It's certainly important to the social fabric of our island community. We know through research that nationally, we have huge studies, that anywhere from $3 to $8 is the investment return for every dollar that's given. Every dollar we invest in early childhood reaps the benefits of anywhere from $3 to $8. We know that there are many states, like California, who determine the number of prison cells they need to build by looking at the quality of early childhood education. We know that if we invest early on, there'll be less need for remediation, there'll be less social issues, teen pregnancy is lowered. We know that welfare issues are lowered. We know that we need to do this right, and we need to do it at the beginning. And a way to do this is through licensed, quality, early childhood centers where families can come and learn how to do it well, where children can learn how to be with one another, where socially and emotionally, our island's future is provided quality, safety, and security. And it's through these types of measures, Madam Speaker, where we can lower the bullying rates, where we can talk about respect and human rights, and where we can teach and learn from one another. I thank you for allowing us to speak on Bill 141-31, and I ask our colleagues to consider the support of Bill 141. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, recognize the Vice Speaker, Senator Tom Ada. Yes, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 141. I sat in on the hearing, which was held earlier, which instituted then the new standards that a lot of these daycare centers would have to meet, and of course, I've heard a lot, I heard a lot about the expenses that many of these centers will have to incur in order to be able to meet those standards. So it's heartening to see that now we have Bill 141 that would give that financial break to these facilities to be able to offset some of those expenses. I think pretty much the merits of the bill have been pretty well articulated, and I certainly don't need to repeat that, but I do have some concerns with the bill. On the one hand, it's kind of like right now, both hands are tied behind the backs of these child development centers, and we want them to go out there and be able to start up their programs and be able to survive. On the one hand, they, of course, whatever money they make, it's subject to the GRT taxes. And on the other hand, the other challenge that they have is that because many of them are operating on grants, the government is not as forthcoming in, I guess, reimbursing the expenses from these grants. And so what we've done in this bill here is by giving them the exemption from the GRT for, I believe it's for the next five years, we have untied one hand. But at the same time, we kind of took that same hand that got freed up and tied it again a little bit, because now we're saying you can get the 5% the GRT tax exemption, but you cannot raise your prices by more than 5%. And it's in that regard that price increase restriction that I really have some difficulty with. I feel that we should go ahead and give them the advantage to be able to, you know, make the investments and then give them the GRT tax exemptions for the next five years. I'm concerned, though, that, you know, for five years, they're going to be getting this GRT tax exemption, and then on the sixth year, zero, as opposed to maybe a concept where the first two years, they get a full tax exemption. On the third year, it'll be reduced down to, let's say, just pay 1% or whatever, but it's a gradual weaning process, so that on the sixth year, they have pretty much disciplined themselves to be able to get off that exemption and then start becoming a full-paying business in the community. So that's an idea that I think we need to take a look at. I don't have the language right now as to how that would, how we would amend that. The other aspect of the bill that I really hope that we can consider is that take away this price restriction. You know, if the development center wants to increase its price and price itself out of the market, then that's his business, because somebody else is going to be able probably to provide the same service without pricing themselves out of the market. But the idea of price control, the government saying you can only increase your price by 5%, no more than 5% during this five-year period that you are enjoying a tax exemption, I just don't feel right with that. You know, I think we should let the spirit of competition take its course, and if it needs to increase its prices 6%, then let them do that, and if it reduces their clientele because they've priced themselves out of the market, then that's a business decision that they have to make. But for us to say you can't increase it by more than 5%, well, what's so magical about 5%? Why not, you can't increase it more than 6? You can't increase it more than 7? I say just do away with the price control. You know, it's kind of like the idea that we toyed with before about as the demand for housing starts to increase, we're going to tell the, you know, there was attempts made in the past to get the landlords to control the rent. You can't go past a certain amount. I just have difficulty with this idea of a price control. So, again, I guess the first amendment I would make would be, and admittedly, Madam Speaker, I, well, first of all, there'll be, there'll have to be a technical amendment because what's shown in the bill is that they must comply with the annual 5% enrollment fee increase limit, but it's shown here the numerical is .05%. So that's a technical correction that will have to be made. But I guess the first amendment then I would like to make to the bill is to delete Section 3 on page 3 on Bill 141. Remove the price control. Let the spirit of competition take its course. So that, Madam Speaker, is my amendment to the bill.
On the Ada amendment, Tom Ada amendment, is to delete Section 3, which starts on page 3 and continues on to page 4. On the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. That whole section evolved as the care providers were actually speaking amongst themselves in the countless meetings that we've had, and it was their way of ensuring that nobody took advantage, I suppose, of the policy. But in listening to Senator Tom speak, I agree, or the previous speaker's speak, I agree that that whole notion of price control is something that perhaps should be reconsidered. I do say there's a great value to competition, and I do believe that the families themselves will determine what they can pay and what they are willing to pay. So I stand in support of the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, again, to delete Section 3, or anyone who'd like to speak on it? There being none, Senator Ada, would you like to close? No? So are there any objections? No objections to the deletion of Section 3, so ordered.
Do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do, Senator.
The second amendment that I would like to have considered, and again, I don't have the language right now, but that is on Section 2 there, which provides for the tax exemption for a period of five years. And on that one, I would just ask for, I guess, a moment's break, or if any, I guess, maybe we can-
We'll go ahead and take a break, because this is a substantial amendment that, when you're talking about the percentage. So we're going to be on a brief break.
Madam Speaker, thank you. I'm just going to withdraw any suggestion of amending Section 2 regarding the period for the tax exemption, so I'm just going to withdraw that and retire. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak in Bill Number 141? There being none, Senator Rodriguez, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I close, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place you, Speaker Wampet, as the third co-sponsor of this, of Bill 141.
Thank you. On the motion, without objections, so ordered.
That's right.
That's very significant. I want you to-
And Senator Tom Ada as the next co-sponsor.
On that motion, without any objections, Senator Ada, you are also co-sponsor. Very significant, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to bring this legislation forward and ask that they consider this and vote positively on this measure when it comes time to it. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So on the motion, then, to place Bill 141 on the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. On Bill, I mean Resolution Number 171, I recognize the primary author, Speaker Panglinen. Resolution 171.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move, I would move that Resolution Number 171-31COR be placed in the third reading, in the voting file, and I'd like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, and Seduce Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution 171-31 is a resolution that expresses the support of the people of Guam, and most especially the Guam Legislature, Ilis Laturanguahan, for initiatives in Congress from our friends in Congress that have been developed over the years, who seek to include the people of Guam in compensation programs for individuals that have been exposed to ionizing radiation through the tests of the atomic nuclear weapons within the United States and within the Pacific. We are making some progress, Madam Speaker, in this effort to find some justice and relief for the people of Guam who suffer from so many illnesses associated with exposure to ionizing radiation. This whole matter came to the attention of the body through the effort, really, of one single individual who appealed to this legislative body about the existence or the exposure of the island of Guam, and thus the people of Guam, to the nuclear fallout of the tests in the Marshall Islands. When this was initially brought to the attention of the legislature and, of course, then, the community, people within our community were, to put it kindly, skeptical that this was such the case, and that the illnesses from the many, many different forms of cancer that we see in our community afflicting our people and wrecking havoc on their health and their financial resources to pay for the costs associated with these illnesses, that it just, nobody could fathom that that was the case. Many members in our community, most detractors, say, here we go again, making some charges that, you know, the United States has done this to us, and how could a country with such compassion for its people and such freedom and democracy, how could they do this and not tell us about it? If we were exposed, we would know, because the US would tell us so that we can take care of the situation and the problem, and we can be part of the solution that they've offered to those places within the United States in which there was conclusive evidence of exposure to the atomic tests. And these places were in such states as Arizona, New Mexico, Nevada, of course, where the actual nuclear tests were conducted. And so members of our community almost ridiculed this individual and those that listened to him, most especially this legislative body. That individual's name, Madam Speaker, is of course, as we all know it, Mr. Robert Celestial. And the people that have worked- And the people that have worked with him over the years and have coalesced and gathered to lend their efforts to the work that he has done, where it now becomes their collective work, which Robert always says, he will never say, it's been my work. He will always say, it's been the collective effort of all involved, and he's had the opportunity to contribute. But he has been the main contributor. But this legislative body is not to be without credit to this, because we listened and we supported his efforts. And when that issue was brought to the attention of the people of Guam and this legislative body, the legislature, who at that time was being headed by Speaker Mark Forbes, worked with members of the body, most especially Senator Angel Santos, to form a subcommittee to look into the matter of whether or not, in fact, the people of Guam were exposed to the Marshall Islands Bikini Atoll and Ouitak nuclear tests from the fallout that went up into the atmosphere and traveled through the jet stream. And when we started to think about all of this and be a bit more precise and scientific about it, instead of getting more support, we got more resistance from some members of our community. But we didn't stop there, Madam Speaker. This body and Mr. Celestial, and by this time now, a group called PARs, and most especially the Blue Ribbon Panel, that was formed by this body and supported by this body, headed by Dr. Chris Paris and Dr. Wes Youngberg, impaneled and examined classified documents that most recently had been declassified by President Clinton and then National, I think it's the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, about the effects of these tests and what happens in these tests. And we had one other individual that assisted this community in the form of, in the name of, Mr. Schreiber, who was a Navy corpsman who was on Guam in the late '50s when the tests were occurring in the Marshall Islands. And his job was a nuclear radiation officer. And it was his duty to monitor nuclear exposure or nuclear radiation levels in the community. And through an affidavit, working with the Blue Ribbon Panel and Senator, the late Senator Angel Santos and Mr. Celestial, we've got an affidavit from him saying that on a certain, I forget the exact date, but when the, a couple of months after the Bikini Atoll nuclear explosions, that his Geiger counter just went berserk, that the radiation levels that he had measured in his duty as the nuclear radiation officer on Guam was off the charts on this day. And he thought it was broken, so he went outside and measured more and different points and areas of where he was at, and it was just the same. It was just off the charts. And the only plausible explanation and scientific explanation for the Geiger counter behaving like that was the existence of nuclear fallout. And so from his affidavit, Mr. Celestial worked through the declassified documents, and we requested through Freedom of Information Act any records that the United States government had about the nuclear fallout on Guam and activity that was associated with any of the nuclear tests in the Pacific on Guam. And what did we get? There are no records available to substantiate your request. And it wasn't just once, it wasn't just twice. And so Mr. Celestial then decided that he was going to now review these classified documents that were recently declassified. And lo and behold, what did we find? Of course, we found, for example, that after the nuclear tests in the Pacific in which the United States government directly and intentionally put ships in the area of the jet stream downwind from the explosions in Ouitak, so that they can be exposed, and what would happen to them? They wanted to run some test experiments and put these ships in the path of their jet stream. And what did they do? They brought those ships to Guam, and they decontaminated them. They washed them down in our waters of the coast of Cocos Island and within the harb- waters of Apra Harbor. But they never admitted to that fact. Every time we asked them, they said, no nuclear activity associated with the tests, nuclear tests in the Pacific were conducted on Guam. Well, what is the washing down of these exposed ships constitute? If not nuclear activity associated with those tests. But this government just refused. They refused to acknowledge that there were illnesses in our community, people dying and suffering every single day, and they kept telling us, nothing is wrong, and it cannot and is not linked to the nuclear fallout, because you don't have any. You were not exposed until we found these records. And so what we did, or Mr. Celestial did and the Blue Ribbon Panel, was arrange all of the documents that they found, the scientific evidence available, and compile them in a report. And we then petitioned to the National Association for the Academy of Sciences and the Brer Commission, which was impaneled, to review the effects of nuclear fallout on the citizens of the United States. And we petitioned and presented this findings of our report from the Blue Ribbon Panel, and we sent a delegation to testify before the National Academy of Sciences. These are the nuclear experts of the federal government and the community that review and determine, based on scientific evidence, whether or not communities have actually been exposed, and what they are suffering can be linked to the fallout and the exposure to ionizing radiation. And the conclusion of this scientific panel in their report is that there is substantive and conclusive evidence that the people on the island of Guam were exposed to nuclear fallout as downwinders from the explosions of the atomic tests conducted in the Marshall Islands. This is now not our own panel of experts. This is the National Academy of Sciences' panel of experts, and said that Guam, thus, given this fact, should be eligible and made eligible for compensation programs and health programs under the downwinders category of what we call RICA, Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. And from that day forward, we have worked tirelessly in this community, assisting the efforts of Mr. Celestial and this now group of individuals called PARs, the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, who are suffering from the many maladies and illnesses that come about consistent with exposure to ionizing radiation, cancers, Madam Speaker. And we see these people every day. We see them every day in the clinics. We see them in our funerals, because many of them pass away, without ever being made a part of this process, of getting some relief and assistance from the federal government as they provide to those other citizens of the United States that have been exposed and are covered by RICA. And so this resolution continues the efforts of supporting those senators and congressmen within the United States Congress, who continue to also fight for their own citizens that were not included in the original RICA legislation. And through the efforts of Mr. Celestial and many others, we are now part of legislation within Congress that we have worked with Senator Crapo and Senator Udall with the bill in the Senate, and Senator Ben Luhon in the House of Representatives, that now have legislation that would expand the RICA coverage to more downwinders, other counties within the United States that were not covered by the original legislation, but now through the examination of the health status of members of those communities are now in, unarguably afflicted by ionizing radiation exposure, just as Guam now is unarguably, in my opinion, suffering from the exposure to ionizing radiation. And so this resolution is the expression of our support for those pieces of legislation introduced by Senator Udall, Senator Crapo in the Senate, and Congressman Ben Luhon in the House. And we hope, Madam Speaker, that the good gentleman will succeed in Congress, and that this resolution expresses our support for their efforts, because they have stepped forward, Madam Speaker. We have been petitioning members of Congress to include Guam, and we have networked Mr. Celestial and PARs, Mr. Tidingfong. They all went to Idaho in one of the meetings, and they've been networking with the Idaho Radiation Survivor Group. And through that network, when the bill was going to be introduced to include some people from New Mexico and Idaho, that these gentlemen from those communities were gracious enough through the pleadings and the work of Mr. Celestial and Mr. Tidingfong and others who have continuously communicated with them, that Guam now is also part of this legislation. And should this legislation pass, then the people of Guam will be able to access compensation and health programs for illnesses associated and consistent with exposure to ionizing radiation. ......
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Senator Munia Barnes?
My name is Sidus, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Resolution 171, as authored by the good speaker from Baragada, Speaker Panglinen. I want to thank him for his efforts in including me, and also you, Mr. Vice Speaker, because you too have been working on this issue for many, many years. But as the good speaker from Baragada spoke about this resolution and how he spoke about the passion and the commitment and the love of Mr. Robert Celestial, who I believe in my heart has a never, never quit attitude, if you think ever-ready battery is strong, this man has truly been a champion to the Tramoral people. Mr. Speaker, I just want to say, as we look at this resolution this morning, 171, it literally petitions the United States Congress to amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990 that would include Guam and to improve and increase the compensation for those affected by the ionizing radiation. This resolution, Mr. Speaker, is very important. It continues to be extremely important to the people of Guam, and most especially to the members of our community that are afflicted with many diseases caused by this radiation I would be remiss, Mr. Speaker, if I didn't share the point that this august body has not given up. I know that when I was here in the 27th Guam Legislature, we helped support with the good speaker from Baragada, Speaker Panglinen, Resolution 73. In 2007, Mr. Speaker, we still didn't give up. We introduced Resolution Number 5. In 2009, Mr. Speaker, we introduced Resolution 30-62. And now, in 2011, it's Resolution 171. And, Mr. Speaker, we've asked that, when this body approves this Resolution 171, asking for that support that Guam be included, I just want to give you the list of names, Mr. Speaker, of who we want to transmit it to, because I think it's important that our people know that we will not give up. We've asked that this copies, that this resolution be sent to Senator Patrick J. Lehe from the committee, chairperson for the Committee on Judiciary, he's in the Senate, Senator Chuck Grassley, ranking member on the judiciary, who's also in the Senate. We asked that Senator Tom Harkin, the Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, was with the United States Senate. We asked that Senator Michael B. Enzai, ranking member on the Committee of Health, Labor, and Pensions, also with the Senate, be given a copy. Senator Daniel Akaka, United States- Senator Daniel Akaka, United States Senate, Congressman Lamar Smith, Chairman on the Judiciary, United States House of Representatives, John Conyers, ranking junior, ranking member on judiciary with the House of Representatives, Frant Opton, Committee on Energy and Commerce, House of Representatives, Congressman Joe Barton, ranking committee member on Energy and Commerce, House of Representatives, R.J. Ritter, National Commander, the Association of Atomic Veterans, Mr. Bob Hithow, the Hawaii State Commander, National Association of Atomic Veterans, to all the Senate and area commanders on the National Association of Atomic Veteran, to Robert Celestial, of course, who's been our number-one advocate, who is the president of the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, the family of the late Angel Santos, who's been an advocate and pioneer with the Blue Ribbon Committee, also former Senator Carmen Fernandez, yourself, Mr. Vice Speaker, who has also been a strong advocate in our efforts of moving this forward, to the family of the late Speaker Antonio M. Pinkel, to Dr. Robert Underwood here, who was a former congressman and is also the president of the University of Guam, of course, to the Honorable Barack Obama, President of the United States, to William Jefferson Clinton, former President of the United States, to the Honorable George S. Bush, former President of the United States, to Dr. Chris Paris, who's with us here, a resident of Guam, working with the doctor's clinic, to Dr. Wesley Youngberg, SDA Wellness Center, to Dr. Pablo Guzman, who's also a doctor, and to, of course, our honorable Madalyn Z. Bernalia, who is a non-voting delegate to our House of Representatives. Mr. Speaker, I mention these names just because I want to share with our listening audience out there that we, as policymakers, I, as your policymaker, will not quit in continuing our efforts to include Guam. And to share a note to the PARs survivors, to the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, that your voices and your concerns and your issues will continue, not, that it will not fall on deaf ears, that it will not stop being heard, and that we, as your public servant, will continue to stay close and with the efforts of Mr. Celestial and the PARs organization, that we will continue this vigilant effort so that Guam's voices and concerns and our medical conditions will be heard and the effects of what happened to us will not have gone unheard. So in that effort, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and rise in support of this Resolution 171. And I want to thank the good speaker, the author of this legislation, Speaker Ben Pangolinen, for giving me the opportunity to be his co-sponsor and to move on this effort to realize that Guam should be included. [speaking Spanish]
Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to be able to speak and stand in support of Resolution 171-31. Start first by applauding the continuing efforts of the main sponsors as well as the co-sponsors to this resolution. I know that for many years, while I continue to serve in this legislature, that the good speaker has developed a relationship not only with Mr. Celestial but with the PARs organization and has continued to stand, to fight, and to help them in getting the recognition for that they deserve and is actually needed to be able to help them get through the many maladies, illnesses caused by the continual radiation exposure and exposure that they've been afflicted with. You know, Mr. Speaker, I am sure, like everybody else, and I'm sure you as well, in the morning, every morning, we are constantly reminded of how we've been affected, how our island has been affected by the exposure to nuclear radiation from those tests that were done in the Atolls, along the Marshalls. Because I'm sure that every morning, you, as well as I, our, what we do in the mornings, we get up, and I'm sure one of the things we do is turn on the TV, and after going through CNN and Fox and ESPN, we probably go to Channel 2 so that, you know, we can look at what the weather's going to look like for the day. But tomorrow morning, when you get up, this time, watch Channel 2 for a different reason and see how, as was stated earlier and as expressed in the resolution, how the jet streams go from the Marshalls into our area, right over us. And it's been like that for many years, if not, in fact, if not centuries. It's just a natural flow. And so every day, we get, we see evidence of just how part of this concern comes to us. I'm sure you can remember, you know, at one point in time, there was fishing advisories that were issued for a fish that was caught in and around the Kokos Lagoon. Then you yourself, Mr. Speaker, you know, brought to discussion and wanted to make sure that the testing that was done in Upper Harbor before they dredge, before they decide to make it a little deeper, wanted to make sure that they were dredging deep enough and that they were testing for specific items. And as a result of that, there was the proof. The good speaker from Baragada also talked about the proof that was provided in testimony from a gentleman who was at one time stationed here and thought that his gyric counter was going haywire, was going whacked, when in fact, the gyric counter was telling the truth. And for many years prior to that, there's always been this, no, that can't, that wasn't happening. No, that gyric counter was wrong. No, there was an exposure. In the meantime, we see a number of our people on our island afflicted by many, what a number of people would call "Western Diseases." And for what reason? I don't know if you can recall, Mr. Speaker, because I know it was still there when you served in the board, the Make Wish Foundation. You recall, remember seeing a map that was on the wall one time at the office? And the map having a number of pins? And the colors of the pins, depending on the color of the pins, each color, whether it was cancer, whether it was another illness, you can tell by the color of the pin. And if I can remember correctly, I think the color of the pin for cancer was red. And I'm sure you got, you were shocked just as much as I was, how many red pins were on that board? And remember, Mr. Speaker, the organization we used to serve on? Were for kids, were for those in our population below the age of 18? I'm sure you wondered, just like I did. Why was that so prevalent? Why was that happening? And as a result of the continuing work, not only by the good author, but of Mr. Celestial, the PARs, and the PARs group, and many others, you included, there was finally, there's finally that recognition. Now we need to take it to that next step. Now we need that recognition to be codified, solidified, known. And what really disturbs me about this whole process is that we have to do this. As was stated by my good sister from Chalapago, this is not the first resolution, it's not the second one. Matter of fact, it's not even the third one. This is a constant reminder. And while I continue to applaud the efforts and the continuous persistence by many of individuals that sit in this hall, why do we have to continue to do this? But you know what? I am confident, I'm confident, and I want to be confident, that the passage of this resolution sends a clear message, a strong message, and hopefully, a final message, that our people should be rightfully included in the recognition for the radiation exposure they've been subjected to. And thank God I took my blood pressure pills. Because I'm going to remain calm. And I'm going to ask my colleagues, please, let there not be any hesitation to stand in support of this resolution. Let there not be any thought otherwise. It's right, it needs to get done, it needs to be passed unanimously by this body. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Speaker Juan Pat, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also rise in support of this resolution, Resolution Number 171. I have here, and I've read this some time ago and I've refreshed my memory as well, is this Blue Ribbon Panel Committee Action Report. And as stated earlier, is that it was through the 26th Guam Legislature when this committee was actually put together to, for the first time, actually, is to focus on the time periods. And we're looking at mid-'40s to the late '50s in regards to this direct atmospheric fallout and decontamination runoff from military ships and aircrafts. The interesting part of this is that even when that first bill was introduced in Congress, it was designed primarily for the states, for, in the continental U.S. And there's been no other reports specifically, you know, stating Guam. And it wasn't until, of course, through the efforts of Mr. Robert Celestial, that there was this group of individuals in the community and scientists as well, who've actually compiled this report, conducted this research, to show that the direct responsibility of the federal government to, when we say normally, well, we think just the local people, but it was actually to the local military and civilian population in Guam. So it was basically everyone who was living in Guam. The actions then taken by the Atomic Energy Commission, the United States Navy and Air Force, put the population of Guam in harm's way knowingly, put the population on Guam knowingly and with total disregard for anyone who is living here on Guam at that time. What then was perpetuated against this whole region, from the Marshall Islands down to our area, was the largest ecological disaster in human history. We thought that that was primarily in Hiroshima, but it was actually the largest ecological disaster in human history was with all the detonation of these nuclear explosives, primarily because when you stop and think about it, and we never really realized how damaging this was, because this, the disaster was no less than the detonation of over 108,000 kilotons of nuclear explosive directly up jet stream of Guam. We're talking about an amount of a contamination that's 42 times the approximately of 150 million curries released as a result of testing in the United States of America. So they have inundated the region and other surrounding regions here with various radioactive isotopes. And sometimes when we think about these types of isotopes, that some of them are not as damaging, but in the amounts in which they were all, as a combination of what was put together, these products of nuclear tests has with it a half-life of from four days to 30 years, enough time to reach Guam according to the data provided and collected in this report. Another finding that's really interesting in this report is the potential time that the radioactive debris was suspended in the air, and some readings put the fallout between, and listen to this very carefully, between 1946, many of you I know were not born around that time, but 1946, but ending as late as 1974. So I don't know, I'm sure we have some of our members here that were born after 1974, but everyone who were here from 1946 to 1974 has been affected by this fallout. And all of these isotopes caused various different types of genetic damage to biological organisms, and the longer the debris was suspended in our environment, the more damage the island would have sustained. So the number of people then who were affected encompasses not just the local people, but including the military personnel who were present here from 1946 to 1974. Just think about this, when we say "downwind," because what has happened is that really the winds have carried, all of these isotopes were carried by winds to all parts of the earth, because we're talking about those in the mainland and those of us here that were affected from the Marshall Islands. The delayed fallout The delayed fallout is brought to the earth primarily by rain and in the mainland, snow, over an extended period of time ranging from months to years. And scientists actually call this process the scavenging effect. This delayed fallout and scavenging effect is what concerns us here on Guam. Because Guam was directly in the path of the global fallout and all factors that came with that phenomenon of nuclear fission. And I'm going to state eight reasons why everyone in this body should support this resolution and which is supported by scientific analysis. And these are the facts. First, Guam is approximately only twelve hundred miles directly west of the Marshall Islands. Not very far. Second, the Atomic Energy Commission detonated sixty-six nuclear devices with a total yield of one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two kilotons in and around the Marshall Islands. One hundred and eight thousand! Third, there are ten detonations that have the yield necessary, which is one megaton, to project material from the center of the explosion to the height of between, the height of twelve to fifty-five miles into the jet stream. Guam is not even that long. We have four to eight miles wide and thirty-three miles long. And this detonation was projected up to twelve to fifty-five miles high. Fourth, the jet stream traveled from Marshall Islands and carried the radioactive materials as fine dust particles. These particles then collected ice at high altitudes and fell to the earth, condensing into clouds. And this is known as the scavenging effect. Fifth, the material drops in the form of rain and enters the food and water supply of the local population. Entered our food and water supply necessary for us to survive, but contaminated. Six, reports from the Navy indicated that they had full knowledge. The Navy had full knowledge and did not warn or help the local population. I repeat, the Navy had full knowledge and did not warn or help the local population. This type of behavior compromises the integrity of the military forces that were put here to protect the very people that they were harming. Seventh, ships present during the nuclear testings were decontaminated in Guam harbors with acetic detergent. And the runoffs from these operations went directly into our local fishing and reef environments. They went into, directly into our local fish and our environments, our reef environments. And the eighth reason is the U.S. Navy performed radioecological studies on the surface water in and around Guam and found a major peak of radioactive contamination in nineteen fifty-nine. So those are eight reasons. There are more, but these are the eight. That definitely is a concern, should concern everyone on the island and definitely explains why our people have suffered of many diseases that are so rare, but yet very prominent on our island. Because Guam was directly in the path of this global fallout. And no one between nineteen forty-six to nineteen seventy-four could have escaped it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senator Palacios, you're recognized. Are there any other senators? Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. I have heard about the plight of these victims who became ill due to the exposure to the toxic element. Uh, many people in Guam were, of course, innocently exposed to this toxic. The scientific evidence, Mr. Speaker, is overwhelming in support of claims of exposure in Guam. And it would be prudent, of course, of the U.S. government to extend coverage to this group of victims called the downwinders. Uh, so I join my colleague, Mr. Speaker, in urging the U.S. Congress to include Guam under the provision, of course, of on-site participant and downwinders. It's overwhelming, the scientific is overwhelming, and I hope that this come to the end. This issue has been ongoing for the last four, five years. Courageous people stood up and continue to express, of course, you know, their, their claim. And so I rise in support of that and I hope that the U.S. Congress, this time, Mr. Speaker, will hear us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other senators? Senator Ben, do you wish to close?
Don't clue na sidusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Then don't clue na sidusmasi para todo si mangatzongu ni manguentos. Na tumu hidlo quitni sentimentu nia pudestina resolution. Madam Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to move this resolution to the voting file and most especially to all of my colleagues who expressed their support for the resolution and all of those that continue to listen to the issues that have been presented by each of the speakers on this floor of this legislative body, the House of the People of the Day. I also want to invite the members of our community as happens every year for the last several years to the candlelight vigil that the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors holds every single year, in which we gather together to lend solidarity and support to those individuals that are members of this organization and members of our community who have passed on in the intervening year due to exposure to nuclear ready, ionizing radiation and its effects on the health, which are often fatal. And so this evening, once again, between the hours of eight, six to eight P.M. on Friday, November fourth, at the Plaza de España, we will once again conduct our memorial candle vigil and extend an invitation to every single member of this body and the members of our community to support our continued effort to bring justice and relief to those members of our community that have been living with and dying from exposure to ionizing radiation. Thank you and sidusmasi, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Pangolinis, on the motion then to place Resolution one seventy-one on the third reading file without any objections. So I'd like to recognize Senator Mabina in Bill number one eighty-two.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill one eighty-two thirty-one to the third reading file and to briefly discuss the bill.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Having had previously worked with the Guam Public Library System, it was evident to me and as well to many people in the, in our community, especially those who are patrons of the library and who continues to patron the library, that the institution itself needs a lot of maintenance, maybe even an expansion if possible. However, as we all know, funding support is very limited. What Bill one eighty-two thirty-one does is basically encourages the library to be part of a trend that I hope other agencies will adopt and to be more enterprising. So this bill will essentially allow the board to lease the exterior frontage portion of the Hagatnia or the Neves Flores Public Library or the Hagatnia Public Library, to lease that to a small mobile food establishment and in essence to provide a drink, a drink or food services for library patrons or individuals, the general public in the area. So in essence, it's a, like perhaps a cafe business establishment. I have traveled to various places in the United States and even throughout the world and have seen libraries or bookstores who have cafes. In fact, in Minneapolis, I was very impressed with how their big public library had in its establishment an actual private entity, a cafe. And what it does, it attracts individuals to come to the institution or to the building. And in this case, that's what we're also hoping. So it, it has two purposes. It helps not only generate revenue for the, for the library, which in this case would be mainly to support the maintenance and the improvements of the library infrastructure. But the second benefit is to begin attracting individuals to, to the library, increase more patrons and visitors to the establishment. The library administrators and staff have expressed support for this bill and they're looking, and I know that they have some funding to eventually improve or expand the actual building. And maybe in the future, such establishment could be moved into the library. But as of right now, the frontage property is underutilized and could be used as a capital mechanism to help raise money to support the maintenance and improvements of the Gania Public Library. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the motion, you recognize Senator Mana Silva Tyron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the measure, any, any bill that would provide assistance to the ailing library system, it has my full support. It does need the help, it's falling apart at the seams. So any, any support we can give it financially, I think we should all come together and, and throw our support behind it. There is one amendment that I would like to introduce. It's on, if you take a look at line twenty-two and twenty-three on page two of the bill, it states that the funds shall be used at the sole discretion of the Director of the Guam Public Library System. You might recall that the governor had introduced a reorganization advisory that placed the Guam Public Library System under the Department of Tomorrow Affairs. And what it did was it eliminated the director's position. So what I'm hoping to do is to strike out that line, these funds will be used at the sole discretion of the Director of the Guam Public Library System, and instead replace it with the use of these funds shall be subject to the determination and approval of a majority of the library board. We do know that the board is still intact and this way it, it's not given to the director, the director's position, which no longer exists. So it's a common sense amendment and I hope that the body supports it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, which is on page two of the bill, lines twenty-two and twenty-three, is to delete that last sentence and replace it with the use of these funds shall be subject to the determination and approval of the majority of the library board. I have Senator, wait, on the motion now, you're right, the amendment rather. Senator, on the amendment then, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of the amendment. And I, I do that not only because it does make sense, but also to reinforce the idea that the whole reorganization effort has to follow particular processes. The whole notion that we are going to condense, reorganize, shift, give a new look to the libraries, is something that needs to be done with, with due process. And you and I have met on this issue and I know we are on the same page. So this will, will send the message that the library board does still exist, even though there are no board members on this board right now. So that message is we need board members appointed and that, that whole structure is there. So I stand in support of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the amendment, Speaker Pangolinis, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly support the efforts to expand opportunities for additional resources for the Guam Public Library System. And it is, to me, I, I'm really saddened by the recent decision. And even a little confused, of course, to close our public library branches. You know, it, it, I just don't know. I don't know whether Governor Calvo didn't like to read when he was young or something. But boy, did I love to read. And I still do today. And at every opportunity and every resource available, and I know, oh, we have all these resources available, but the library is, it, it's a haven. You know, it's a time for quiet, it's a time for exploration. You know, we, we just lost one of the greatest innovators in the twentieth century, twenty-first century, eighteenth, nineteenth century in, in man's history, I think, in Steve Jobs. And one of the things that I was reading recently was some of the things that he had gone through in his life from getting ousted at Apple, where he founded the company and he got thrown out because the vision wasn't conforming to the marketing aspect or the, the, the time of the board. So he sold every single share he had in Apple except one share. And that was his door to come back in when the company was floundering and on the verge of bankruptcy and they brought him back in. But when he was looking at Apple and trying to define what Apple is going to do for the, for man, not, not for the computer industry, but for man. And he took a look at efficiency. And he said that the American condor is probably the most efficient animal alive. That with a flap of its wings, it's able to fly with just one flap of its wings longer than any other, and travel further than any other animal on earth. And so he said that that is the most efficient energy-wise in terms of propelling itself. And what was he, what was a computer going to do? But he said, and he said, but you know what? If you put man on a bicycle, he becomes ten times more efficient than that condor. And so what was the computer going to be? It was going to be the bicycle of the mind. That it was going to make the mind so much more efficient than we can ever imagine. And before the computer, it was libraries that made the mind more efficient than anything we can imagine. What is in the library? What is there? The repository of all human history and knowledge. And so I'm a little puzzled by the dismantling of this efficient machine, what I would call this bicycle of the mind for the human nature, for man, in our libraries and shutting them down. It just, I can't understand it, I'll never grasp it. And I can't ever accept that it's worth it. That to save a director's position, it's worth flattening our bicycle or even taking it away, you know? It just, it baffles me. But I wanted to make an amendment to this amendment, Madam Speaker, and... Madam Speaker, and that the money may be subject to the determination and approval of the library, but it must be appropriated by this legislative body. And so I wanted to add that phrase after board, put a comma, and just put, and subject to legislative appropriation. And let me tell you why I think we want to take a look at doing this. For me, in terms of just trying to build the chain of accountability for the expenditure of government funds. And the most recent example, of course, where we need this kind of accountability is take a look at what happened with Appeals Board, where they had this fund that was subject to the Appeals Board, and lo and behold, the most recent audit, the legislature never knew about it. It wasn't presented to the legislature that we had this revenue stream and we're going to spend it in a manner. They just went and spent it. And when you take a look at the most recent audit of what happened, there are questionable expenditures there. The tracking, the accountability, what it was spent for is even questionable. And as the singular power of this body that is ingrained in the Organic Act is to appropriate revenues of this government of Guam and to ensure accountability for these revenues. And so I'm making a motion, Madam Speaker, to add an amendment to this amendment, which would add a comma after, replace the period after board with comma and put and subject to legislative appropriation.
On the amendment, I see Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, are you going to speak on the amendment to the amendment?
No, no, not the main.
Oh, okay, the main amendment, okay. So on, on the Panglinen amendment, they recognize, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, before I can decide on whether or not to support the amendment to the amendment, and I can see, you know, in as far as the concern brought up by the, by the speaker and the move of the amendment, just maybe a point of inquiry, just how much are we talking about here?
Would you like the author then to respond to that question?
Yes, please.
Senator Mabini, do you yield to the question? Please.
Now, this will, the, the lease, you know, as of, as of right now, obviously, we're not procuring for any of the services at the moment. But what we're, what we're looking at is the going cost of leasing, I guess per square feet in the Hagatnia area. That's what I would, that's the calculation. And, you know, those amounts is significant enough to help when it comes to the maintenance and improvements at the library. Maybe not something to build a wing or whatnot, but enough to, to assist in the daily or monthly or yearly funding necessary to, for a library upkeep. It could range anywhere between, when I had some discussions, it could be anywhere between a thousand to 10,000 if, when it comes to the lease agreement. But again, those are arbitrary numbers that I'm just tossing out. But I believe it's, it's significant enough to, for the library to adopt this, this procedure so that they can get the funding support to do their maintenance, but not significant enough to, you know, to consider building a, you know, new facility or whatnot.
Senator, are you satisfied with the answer?
Well, in some respects, I, I am. Because then it goes to, again, I recognizing the concern that was brought on by mover of the amendment to the amendment and wanting to establish and to set a form of the accountability. I'm not too sure as to whether or not, if we're talking about that range. I, I just don't want the language to be perceived that if there was the lease of that property for, that, that, that space for a thousand dollars, that this body is going to have to then approve the expenditure of that amount. I, I would be more in tune with that this body is informed with regards to how much the, the amounts were collected and what the board would approve in as far as the expenses to that. And that through the budgetary process, that we recognize it is seen by us that this is how much was collected and this is what it was going, it was approved to be spent on. I just don't know whether we want to get into that whole process of, again, having the board or the library have to come to us for that amount and then ask, seek the approval of this body to be able to spend in, you know, if, in fact, that that's the amounts that we're talking about. At the same time, I see the concern and wanting to ensure that, you know, this money is not spent frivolously, frivolously, or, you know, that there are mechanisms in place so that we can, we can account for this. So that's my concern that I have here and I'm, in my mind, I'm just trying to figure out. I know that you can't amend, amend, an amendment to an amendment. But I see the concern. I, I don't want to lose, you know, the opportunity to be able to put some type of mechanism in place. I just don't think that having to come to this body every time that, you know, to appropriate that money is necessary. Thank you very much.
On the amendment to the amendment, is, is there anyone else like to speak? Senator Tyhren first, unless there's something you want to clarify or you want to respond to the question as well?
Yeah, just, just a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please say.
The idea, the idea of course is that, you know, they know how much money they have. They approve the expenditure. And then during the budget process, it's just, that's part of the budget process is that this fund is appropriated for what the library board approved the funds to be used for. But we just need to appropriate expenditure of government funds and not allow expenditure without appropriation. So it's not a, every single expenditure. Yeah, sure. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So, but we'll give you that opportunity when you close. Senator Tyhren, you recognize. You're okay with that as well then? Okay. So is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the Panglinen amendment? Then Speaker Ben Panglinen, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Based upon the information and the exchange that just occurred, Madam Speaker, I'd like to, to plead for the body to allow me to withdraw the amendment and, and add, and offer a substitute amendment instead. So I move to withdraw my original amendment.
Okay, on the motion then to withdraw the original amendment without any objections, so ordered.
And then would propose the new amendment and subject to legislative appropriation through the annual budget process.
Through the annual?
Budget Act, I guess.
Budget Act?
Yes.
So the new amendment is after board is to add the words and subject to legislative appropriation through the annual budget act. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. On, Speaker Panglinen, you still have the floor to speak if you would like. So on the amendment, I mean, on the motion, Senator Palacios, you recognize?
Main.
On the main, yes, on the main motion now. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we do that.
That's right.
I need to go back to the amendment that has been amended. So on that amendment by Senator Tyhren that's been amended by Speaker Panglinen, are there any objections? No objections? So ordered. Now Senator Palacios. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Of course, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. It would be a good program and I would like to see that it succeed. I'd like to make an amendment, Madam Speaker, on page two, line 26, after the word public accountability, and actually to add a new subitem and to read, "The library board shall establish policy and procedures for the administration of this subsection, 80128." And the reason for this, Madam Speaker, is so that we want to make sure that-
One moment. Do we have a copy of the amendment?
I pass it on, Madam Speaker. Should we pass that?
No, I don't think we have any up here. Can we please make sure we get a copy up here?
It's up there.
No, we don't have copies up here. Neither the clerks or I have a copy. Thank you. Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the reason I consider this amendment necessary is that to make sure that the awarding for the privilege to operate a mobile canteen is fairly administered. So for example, issues of hours of operation, there should be an internal policy establishing that. And how about the public liability insurance coverage perhaps can be required of the vendor? Because there would be patrons going to patronize the stand and not necessarily library patrons. Employees next door would go and probably, you know, take a break there. We would like to know what is the policy on that. And of course, the renewal clause, would this be an automatic? I, I, there is a provision, of course, in the bill that it should be through the procurement process. But that, I would think, Madam Speaker, would be limited to the initial, I guess, solicitation and participation, but then from there on. And I tell you, that location would be an attractive location for a mobile canteen. And I just like to make sure that it's fairly administered, that, that interested operators would have a, a chance, a fair chance, and, you know, to participate and be fairly treated. And that's why I offer this. So it's up to them how they establish the policy and procedures. We just want some consistency in the administration of the program, Madam Speaker. And I, I hope my colleagues will consider that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the Palacios amendments to add a new subsection D after line 26. On the amendment, Speaker Panglinen, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly support the amendment. I just wanted to kind of put on the record something for the library to consider in terms of the awarding of this, because I've already spoken on the bill, so I got to put it in during this amendment process, is that I hope they don't sacrifice parking space because it is premium down there. So I hope they don't, that, oh, we're now going to get 2,000 a month, so we're going to take half of our parking lot and allow a mobile canteen there. And therefore, you know, lose the parking ability for patients to park. So hopefully they'll put that in the rules and regulations. Thank you.
You're very welcome. On the amendment then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator, you still have the floor? Is there, is there anything else, albeit? So on the, the main motion, to send it down to third reading file, on the motion? Yes. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 182. Madam Speaker, when I was a young boy many, many years ago, I did not like to read. My parents found it very challenging to try to encourage me to read. I also, as a result, wasn't doing very well in school. And one of the reasons why I have so much respect for people like yourselves, Madam Speaker, and other members in this body who are teachers, is it was when a teacher took me aside and actually made me understand the value of reading that I started to love reading. This teacher took me aside and explained that although I like to watch TV and play games and, yes, there were video games during that time, what reading does is it allows for the mind to explore and to create and to expand. And everything else you do in life, and especially in education, will be enhanced by reading. In reading, you have the ability to learn just about anything. And so that's one of the reasons why any effort by any member of this body, as has been spoken about earlier by other members, to enhance and to maintain the public library's capability of providing services to young people, children, or just anyone really, should be at all times, I believe, supported. Another reason why I really like this bill, Madam Speaker, is earlier in this legislative session, our good friend and member of this body from Daddido introduced a piece of legislation for the hospital that has similar implications. When we first convened and were conducting public hearings for members of this current cabinet, I remember saying at least to BBMR and Department of Administration, "It's nice to say no to your directors and it's nice to say no when you're holding the purse strings and constraints of the government finances." But sometimes you have to say yes to ideas that have an ability to generate revenue and allow an entity, albeit a government entity, the opportunity to become self-sustaining if possible. This is just another move, Madam Speaker, in that area, in that arena, to continue to transform our government, to allow our government to become self-sufficient if possible, wherever possible. And I also introduced a piece of legislation that's currently at GITA being reviewed for the same model to construct the Department of Youth Affairs and provide for a funding source. So, Madam Speaker, once again, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation, thankful to teachers who taught me to read and hopefully through this minimal or maybe a whole bunch of support, because I certainly will go over there and buy coffee and a sandwich, an opportunity to provide more opportunities for our children in the years to come. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Duñez. On the motion, main motion, there being none, Senator Mabini, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Let me share that I'm very humbled and pleased to hear the feedback from my colleagues, especially those who are, who are in support of the bill. You know, I, I also, when I wrote this bill, the issue of the closures of the public library was not on the table yet. And so, yes, I myself, having been the previous acting director of the library, is very disappointed. However, we, we all understand the, the financial challenges that our government is facing. I believe that there are solutions to possibly keep the libraries and I'm hoping that this is just one small step toward that. And one of my colleagues had mentioned how students, how when we were younger, we, you know, we depended a lot more on books. And today, a lot of our students have the benefit of the digital, the digital world. And, and, Madam Speaker, as you know yourself as a teacher, we still highly value books and many of our students still use books in their classrooms. And many teachers still require textbooks or books as resources and not to be fully dependent on using the Google, Google or Wikipedia in order to find, in order to support their homework. So yes, books are important. Earlier, I mentioned how Minnesota, Minneapolis had a library and I was there at the grand opening of their beautiful, I believe it was six-story glass, public library. And the whole first floor was really focused on digitization. All you saw was, was computers. But from the second floor up, it was nothing but books. And those floors were filled with people. And so books are still going to be something that I believe we'll always have. And it's unfortunate that our Hagatnia Public Library is, is the only library open now. I will tell you right now on the record that the library and the space that they have is, is absolutely inadequate. I will also want to share, it is also the repository for the federal, the documents regarding the military buildup. They are busting at the seams and they need our support. Again, this is just one example of how we could help support our, our public library. Not to mention, I find out that a lot of our students, whether in high school or secondary or post-secondary, look for places to study and read. And they typically go to places where they serve tea, coffee, snacks or whatnot. And wouldn't it be wonderful where they can go to the Hagatnia Public Library, have, sit under some of those nice umbrellas, chairs, and get Wi-Fi and read books, their, their homework, or go into the library and see what kind of resources there are. This is what we want. And since there is a move for Hagatnia revitalization, this is going to be maybe one piece of that puzzle. We want to attract them down to our library and, and build perhaps a stronger support in, in maintaining our, our public libraries. So in closing, I'd also like- So in closing, I'd also like to see if we could add, I'd like to add my colleagues who had spoken up and shared their support of the bill. I'd like them to be co-sponsors of Bill 18231. And that would be including Senators Silva Tyron, Senator Yamashita, Senator Pangolinen, Palacios, Senator Duñez, and Senator Blas, should he, and Senator Guthers. Oh, heck. I'd like to go ahead and add the senators who, who would like to support the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion, then, that, in the following order, Senator Tyron, Senator Yamashita, Senator Pangolinen, Senator Palacios, Senator Duñez, Senator Blas, and Senator Guthers. Without any objection? And then everybody thereafter, Juan Pad de la As, w. So ordered. On the motion, Vice Speaker? Okay, so you're, wait, so you're not speaking on this now? So then, on the motion to send it down, 182 to the third reading file, without objections, so ordered. On the bill number 189, I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I asked the body to accept Bill 18931 as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Governmental Law Operations, and Public Broadcasting.
Let me see, one second. I'm trying to make sure then that, because if this was placed on the agenda, so it's not a new substitution, so it's just for a placement and not to accept.
Then I, I move Bill 189-31 as substituted to the third reading file and ask for an opportunity to address the bill.
Yes, please, I proceed.
Madam Speaker, as you know, as part of my committee's jurisdiction, I have jurisdiction over Department of Chamorro Affairs. And I previously had been chair over the Guam Visitors Bureau. Earlier this year, the Guam Visitors Bureau held a branding conference. And at the branding conference, there were a number of people that were there that were talking about trying to brand Guam, as a destination. And one of the speakers was Senor Pedro Nidera. And he spoke about the fact that there had previously been a commission for a name-place commission. And he spoke about the need to try to bring that commission back, because over the years since the commission had been disestablished, this legislature has gone about naming roadways throughout the island, and we've, we've all had our discussions about the reasons for the names of some of the roads that we've given. But in trying to brand Guam, we really should try to make sure that we have a good representation of the roads and locations to be as true to the original site location and to be in the indigenous language. And that was one of the things that he was talking about, and how, I think, in some of our discussions, and I'm sure many of us have been corrected by various people throughout the island, in discussing areas around the island and being told, "You're referring to Machinano as the wrong place, it's someplace else," or, "Mokfuk is someplace else than you actually think that it is," and quit, quit referring to areas incorrectly. And so, the name-place commission wanted to make sure that those of us that aren't familiar with the correct location of some of these, these places have an understanding and correctly refer to them. It wasn't until I was at that branding conference, I didn't realize, I'd always thought Agafagumas was Chamorro. Much to my surprise, it's an acronym for American Air Force Government Something or Other. It is. It's not a Chamorro name place. And, I know, I, I was surprised. So I, I was Senator Tina Munya Barnes introduced a, a bill to reestablish the Chamorro Name-Place Commission, and the Comisione Nalugat. We had a public hearing. Senor Nidera appeared and testified in favor of the bill, but wanted to make some corrections. And so did Dr. Fe Muñoz, Fe Antalan, I'm sorry, and Ron Leguatia. And so, as a result of the hearing, the committee substituted the bill as originally introduced. And we changed the composition of the comisione. And the comisione will, will now be chaired by the president of the mayor's council. The president of the Department of Chamorro Affairs agreed that he could and should be removed as the, the chair of the commission, and instead recommended that three, that the three members of the Board of Trustees of the Department of Chamorro Affairs be, be named to, to this commission. Rather than have the governor name three people to this commission and have the confirmation process, we would just use three people who had already been named and confirmed, and that would be the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Department of Chamorro Affairs and two members or the Board of Trustees that will be selected by the membership of the board. We remove the president of the, president of the university and add at the administrator of the Chamorro Studies and Special Projects Division of the Guam Department of Education. The purpose of the board was to make sure that the board was consulted in, in naming areas, so that we stop naming or calling areas, designating them incorrectly. I didn't, I, I don't know how many times, I still haven't gotten it correct, and I'm hoping the commission will get me correct. I keep referring to an area, I think it's Machinano, and I'm being told that that wasn't Machinano, it's a different area. So I'm hoping that a map will finally come out with, it's Mokfuk. And so, so I'm hoping that there'll be a map that'll come out that'll show us where all these old established names are to the island, and we'll rename Agafagumas to a Chamorro name, or something make Guma something or other. But anyway, that's, that's the purpose of this bill. I, I know I only had two bills that I could put on this, and, and I felt that this was important, that I really do think that if we're going to work to try to brand our island as a Chamorro destination, that we should try to be as true to the original names and to make sure that we make an effort when we name streets that we try to honor either people who have had historical significance to the island, or individuals in our history who can and should be recognized, that there, that we have many chiefs who have, we haven't named any of, of the roads after that, that could be. And I know in front of the Legislative Secretary's office, she has the, the 29 chiefs that Ed Beneventi did the posters for. And those would be interesting to have as names, so that when we have, there would be some reason when people go around and we, we talk about Guam, that, that the names have some significance to the history of Guam. And I'm hoping that this commission will be the one that's going to help us do that, and so that we can be proud, and more than proud, I think, be informed about our island and our history. So I ask my colleagues for their support in, in the passage of this, of this bill. It's fairly simple, but I think it's going to be, have a lasting effect on our tourism industry, but more importantly, on the education, on our education of what and where our places are on our island. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker on the motion, Senator Munya Barnes.
Sidosmasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this bill, 189, 189-31. Madam Speaker, you know, as you heard the good Vice Speaker speak about how simple this bill is, but how important it is, I just want to say that this legislation will definitely aid our government by providing the correct Chamorro names for streets and places. And, and we know that in today's cultural climate, it is imperative that we try our very best as government to do what we can to keep Chamorro language, to keep Chamorro culture alive. And as the good Vice Speaker spoke about truly realizing that some names, or we thought were done in Chamorro, were really not, but again, acronyms for something else, it just really goes to show that we, as a government, need to do our part. As the good Vice Speaker spoke about the, the posters or the billboards that are in my office that was done by the Guam Preservation Trust, want to give a thank you to them for helping assist Mr. Beneventi in his efforts to acknowledging our Chamorro chiefs, our Chamorro warriors, and our women in our Chamorro culture. You would be surprised, Madam Speaker, to know that one of the reasons why I requested to have those posters up was because there's a realization that our children today don't even know who these folks are. There's a saying that goes, "If you build it, they would come; if you print it, they would know; if you illustrate it, they will understand." And something, I'm just bringing it up today, because you'd be surprised at how many people walk in through my doors, whether to constituents, whether to ask for a personal favor, whether to ask for a bill, whether to ask for an understanding on an issue, or just to ask us to simply do something, and you could see the faces of intrigue. I, I always tell my staff and others who walk in that this is a true conversational piece, conversational pieces of what's on our board. And as I committed to that Hoffa Day pledge, as I committed to supporting and advocating our Chamorro history, our Chamorro language, our Chamorro culture, that was one way of doing it by putting artifacts, by putting drawings, by displaying what we have today so that our children and our children's children can understand. But the intrigue, Madam Speaker, and the conversations that go on, not just by the children or students that walk in, but by the adults who don't know who our warriors were, or our chiefs were, or our leaders back then. And, and it's, it's just a blessing to know that when they read those stories and those articles that are illustrated on the walls in, in my office, you'd be surprised at the in-depth conversation that those, that those constituents have when they're talking to each other. And, and, and the realization said, "Hey, I didn't know that," or, "Ko Magaida, ano?" Or, "Is that really, did that really happen?" Or, "Was this really a true warrior?" Or, "Did you know that there is lineage, blood lineage that goes on?" And, and the list goes on and on and on, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank the Vice Speaker for bringing that up, because it's, it's, it's commitments like that, it's commitments about letting this legislation pass, it's commitments by, by telling our people of Guam that we do care, we want to preserve, we want to protect, but we also want to advocate for protecting who we are as Chamorro island people. This is, this is not just the start, but it's a commitment to show that we care, we need to continue, and we need to make sure that when we continue, that the government does it, does it right for our people. So I want to thank the good sponsor, the Vice Speaker Cruz, Vice Speaker Cruz, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this simple bill, but more importantly, a part of, he says it's simple, but very important, and very keen to making sure that we do what's right. So, un danko, and a sidosmasi for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this bill, 189. And I thank the Vice Speaker again for giving me the opportunity to be his co-sponsor, Sidosmasi.
You're very welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, sometimes simplicity has its significance. And as was stated by the good retiring speaker, as simple as the bill is, it's very significant with regards to the, to the reenactment, recreation of, re-institution of, the establishment of this commission. You know, Madam Speaker, maybe had this commission been reestablished about a couple of years ago, maybe then we could have included that, the commission's suggestion and report as part of a resolution that was unanimously passed by this body requesting our congressional delegate to name a certain, certain postal facility after an individual that all of us in here thought was deserving of that individual. As was evidenced earlier in the year, she decided, never mind about the, what 15 members of this body thought, you know, was right to do, she just went ahead and decided to name it after somebody else. And I know that the author, and I remember this, because I had a discussion with the good author of that resolution back then, you know, and I remember the discussions with regards to other individuals who, who wanted to lay claim and not to take away from any of those people. And really, Madam Speaker, I should say, not to take anything away from the, from, from the good individual that was, that, that facility is now named after. You know, I don't want to take away anything from him. He is deserving of being able to have a place in his honor. But this body unanimously, you know, we went through the rigors, the trials, the, the public hearings. I remember at one point in time, the good author of, of that resolution, the good speaker from Baragada, went through some turmoil with regards to some family, other family, other families of other individuals who thought otherwise. But it went through that rigor. It went through that process. And it was presented. Then it was neglected. Maybe if this commission was in place two years ago, that would not have been the case. Maybe. Or maybe it would have. But, you know, that said, Madam Speaker, you know, I have to agree with some of the discussion and why the author had brought this up. You know, even in this day and age, as, as, you know, there's a resurgence of, of the recognition of our, of our culture, of our language. There's also now this resurgence of the interest of our people to know these different places. Is it Tuzan, or is it Tizen? Or is it Alagut? You know, and, and this commission taken to place, into consideration, some of those, some of those arguments, look back, look into the history, and come up with it. And so, I stand in support of this, this bill. Again, simple. Again, simple. A lot of people think, why? But I believe that as we see the product of the work that they'll produce, it would mean, it would have a lot of significance in being able to help us to truly identify who we are, where we're at, why we're visiting, where we came from, and where we're going. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity, and I stand in support of this bill. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's like, is it Y sing song or I sing song? Senator Guthard, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I think the last time that this commission was really active was during the governorship of Ricardo Bernaldo. He had a fully-staffed commission that worked very hard, and they held hearings to get public input, and they did the proper historical research. Now, I have a question for the authors, two questions. One is, would this affect in any way the authorities currently given to the Board of Education to name schools?
Vice Speaker, do you go to the question? Ongan.
Thank you for the question. It wasn't intended to address the schools because that's a completely separate statute, though by legislative, by statutory construction, I'm not sure whether or not this being the last in date, whether it's, if it's impliedly repealing that, but I really don't think so because that's a specific authorization to the board and this is, this is not. But I stand to be corrected by our two legal counsel as to whether or not. If there is a concern, we can make it very clear that it's not. So they decide to call it Liguanteras.
We're going to take a brief recess. Senator Guthard, you still have the floor.
Yes. Madam Speaker, upon conferring with our legal counsel and the sponsors and yourself, it is clear that the Department of Education is not covered by this particular bill, should it become law, and that the Board of Education still retains the authority extended to it by public law, in which our speaker authored, to name our schools. However, I would like to express one hope, and I'm very pleased that the support for this commission will come from the Department of Chamorro Affairs so that the proper research is done on the proper words to identify streets and other areas that would be covered by this commission in terms of its recommendations so that we don't get into a battle over which orthography is the proper orthography for the naming of specific locations or places under this particular act. As you know, there've been controversies in the past just in terms of the proper Chamorro words to use based on different interpretations of the orthography by different Chamorro language or linguist experts. So I'm hoping that the Department of Chamorro Affairs will be able to give the proper documented verifiable research so that these kind of problems do not occur. I fully support the bill, I commend the authors. I think frankly, this is a great tribute to our former governor, Governor Ricardo Bernaldo, because he really committed himself to enhance the work of this commission during its heyday, and we really do need it back in operation. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Senator Guthard's on the motion. Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Couple of things. First, I'd like to ask if you would, and if the body would have no objection to listing you as a third co-sponsor in this.
On the motion, without objection, so ordered.
And Senator Guthard's wishes to be forth.
On that motion, motion without any objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, I just want to make it very clear that this, this is a very narrow bill. It's just to make sure that we use the correct Chamorro names and the correct Chamorro spelling. It's not, it's not a board that's going to start renaming, renaming places. It's just to make sure that when the Department of Chamorro Affairs or when any department wants to name something, that one, we name it correctly, and two, we spell it correctly. And that it has historical significance. So with that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill. I ask for the support of my colleagues, and I move this bill to voting file.
On the motion to place Bill 189 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We're going to go for lunch, recess, and when we return, we have amended Bill Number 191. Without BU, Mr. Vice Speaker. So we will be in recess.